Seventy-two signatures.
I will see what the bank can do, whether they can, you know, set it up or not, I don't know.
Which one, do you want to go on?
Okay, well, the man that crashed the budget trying to do it myself. First of all, all the payments that I can't assign have been prior approved by this council on the Monday before. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's absolutely correct. Right, I've been appointed as a member of Brampton Members' Planfield by the West Suffolk Council. So that's my interest. Okay, so as far as I'm concerned, there's fourteen people round this table now who are going to authorize these payments. Graham's going to put them to me and I'm going to can't assign them to a payment. Now tell me what's wrong with that, please.
What?
Quite simply, the P S D has cancelled. He asked me a question, I was going to answer.
Yeah, but it's true, Chair. A payment council is in a general, as I recall, when I used to authorize payments on the online bank, there is only the facility for one to do it. The bank do not accept two people doing it at the same time. There is not the facility there on the website to do it. So, as I recall, it was authorized by the council, but through by the, uh, part to me and I would authorize that payment being the second signature on it because the part had already authorized it in his day. And it's a process of the bank. It's nothing to do with this council or anybody taking the niggie in any way, shape or form or breaking the rules. We know it. It's simply that if you go onto your own bank account and do a bank transfer to somebody from your business account, do you need a second signature? Or is there a facility for a second signature? No, there's not.
Mr. Chair, I think that's...
Yes, shall we let him off because he was sort of next, then we're going to use...
I'm more happy with that. I haven't got a problem with that. But what I have got a problem is, why haven't financial rights been changed in future? Why are we having one hand say one thing, one hand saying the other? Why can't we bring them together?
To answer that, then it's the responsibility of Graham to change those and put it, and then put it through the council for approval of those changes.
There is a facility for two to do it, not at the same time on the same page. The linking is complex signatures and complex approvals as well. There has to be two signatures and one authorizes it and then the second one goes online separately to that and confirms it. That's no different from what we should be doing here. What is wrong here is that Graham should not be one of the signatures. It should be probably financial rights.
I'm quite convinced, Norm. I'm sure it is not worth to have some purely interest authorizing. I'm sure you've got one authorizer. I think it would have been pretty good if the part had been authorized by the other.
I mean, it was just back then. After the meeting, the first thing we did is get the payments out. We didn't, we, in error, we did not look at any paperwork first. First order of thing on Tuesday morning was to get the supply of money because they've been waiting for the money.
I appreciate that. I think we still need to check the things.
Right, so perhaps I owe an apology slightly because I think I could have stood for the back. Yes, now I see it. And it should, Graham should have put it through me as a signature to can't assign it rather than that. You're very interested in me. So, yeah, I'm going with the speed now, of course.
My part, I call it a new style.
No, no, no.
You agree with that, thank you?
Okay, right. Was it or not agreed by all the members round this table, bar two, and when I'm on the line, I'm not going to repeat, that we make the first payment to Brampton Members' Planfield? Is that correct? I see that's correct. Okay, okay, okay. All the regulations have been changed regarding the community interest and everything else. How many people round this table have been on the last round of training for that? I'd be interested to know.
I'm not going to know, are you?
Okay, well, yes, it's right, it's right. Well, I'm glad to see there's some people. Okay, okay. Where does this community interest lie then? Because I'm not gaining from making that payment.
I can explain where this, this disposable interest comes in. You are on the management committee and according to the two thousand amendment to the governing document, the payment, you are a trustee. The trust that we, the payment company, recognize it yet, as a member of the management committee, even if appointed by a council, you are a trustee and you have a disposable interest. And that is exactly what it says in the view of practice.
Got it.
And you want to add something to that?
The community interest is still, if you reside with a spouse or partner that benefits financially, that is a community interest.
Even if it's a third, a family member, a mother.
It's, it's not changed that much in view of...
Okay, well, and, yeah, right. Well, as for tomorrow, when I get the request to make all these payments, I'll close the bank account down and then they'll have to arrange for somebody else to do the payments. I'm quite happy to do that if everybody's happy with what I'm doing.
What does that, oh, if the only one which you care to have a cash disposable interest is the Planfield, you're blessed.
No, I'll close the bank account tomorrow. We'll get somebody else to do it and then there's a whole pair again. That's the answer to that.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick bit from Ronnie here, community interest. But don't we all have a community interest residing around it? No? Because it's all quite weird we make the signature of payments. And as I see a lot here, a lot of people tend to deal with, let's say, their own agenda, where they live in the area or what they're into in the area. They don't, don't share that community interest. So, do you think that would be a community interest? No? Why not?
Not coming into your head.
It's not coming into my, it's not going into David's house, it's going to the people he's paying.
Yeah, there is, there is much going on in his household. His wife is paying the secretary. That is a community interest.
Because his wife's...
Yes.
But they don't visit, it goes to Brampton Town Council, remember, which is management committee.
No, she, she's paid by Brampton Planfields. She's paid for doing...
Oh, she takes it.
Do you tell me?
Mr. Chair, I stand corrected that, and I've done a course just recently, I was specifically asked about community interest. And if you have a community interest, you cannot take part in the decision-making process. As, as I've proposed and now I've got a strict about that, and that's not a problem, that's not a offence within these limits, that is unlawful. And that is literally consensually, and in some cases, as they resigning it. We've just had a prime minister who resigned for less than apparently what's happened tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is why I did not vote, I did, I did, like it was, last meeting. Because I feel it was wrong and I think we should, it's public money, we should at least endeavor to do things correctly with past financial waivers, which is passed, is reviewed every year, so at the annual meeting. You know, somebody needs to wait up and realize what's happening and, yeah, necessarily amend financial waivers, which we are, and we can alter certain things. There are some things that are managed, but there are others that we have to amend.
Yeah, I do respect, if you'd have brought this up at the last meeting, I really catch the pain for making that payment. But I did ask, I remember, what your objections were and I didn't get anywhere. Remember?
Yes, because it was not the place to bring up my doubts about Brampton Planfields. It was not the place. And I was being asked to vote to pay them back first in stone.
If you look on the register of interest, you'll find everything is on there. So you, that's there for everybody to see. So why didn't anybody else think that beforehand?
With all due respect, Mr. David, that register of interest was in 2019, from my memory.
That was, that was about three weeks ago, wasn't it, last one?
Right, it's not online. So how would anybody in this room? No.
It's not online.
No, 2019, and that's on online.
Well, not at the last one either. The West Suffolk Council one isn't online.
Well, yeah, it should be online. Your website should be updated to that.
Just want to ask a question. So, call me stupid here. So, yourself, if you found your business, it's on to that couple of community interests. And how about yourself?
Yeah, well, I thought you said, hey, we...
If you notice, in this discussion of anything, the town people's, are wages now, I don't know. But the point is that any interest is meant to be entered in the book, which wasn't. And we all need to be very careful. And I mean, a part should know who's what an interest, I mean, it's a community or a non-community. You should put either on the board.
Yes, I'd like to say something, Mr. David, is that the remembrance Planfield, you know, as I understand it, with community interest, you're not allowed to take part in the debate at all. If you remember, we had quite, even I had quite a discussion about it and further to that. So you're not, you're not supposed to take part in the debate. You're actually, as I understand, I might be wrong, is you're supposed to leave the group. But secondly, it says on clearly in the minutes that you seconded the proposal. And as a long-standing councillor, I wouldn't have expected you, if you weren't going to take part, certainly not to, not to vote because of your community interest and the fact you are a trustee on the remembrance Planfield.
I'm on a committee.
Well, on the committee, as Norm has just said, the members of the committee are, are in fact trustees, as the constitution says.
Well, I really do wish that it brought up at the last meeting, as I asked for to be, the reasons why. Okay, but I, as of tomorrow, I'm not signing any more checks on the, on the bank. So they'll have to find somebody, one or two other people to fill up. And I'll not take part in any more discussions of your Brampton Members' Planfield, as I'm not down there on the paper tonight. Okay, so we've got that one resolved.
Yes, that's extremely childish. And I thought somebody of your experience would have expected better.
We're differently into a corner, aren't we, five?
It has brought out one thing. The remembrance Planfields trustees don't know what they're doing because they don't know who are trustees. They haven't a clue about their governing document. And the Charity Commission takes quite seriously, takes on these things. I know that.
I'm just finding this all right. Because I recall council meetings from when I first stood, got to become a councillor, certain ex-councillors, as you said, into the plan field. Yeah, they were on their fumes. Yeah, now we have, we went a space, or found individuals on there. It just seems, and now all I've seen is like, it's becoming a witch hunt on the Plan, on the Planfields for some reason. To me, it does. From, from sitting here, it's like, it's all been brought up before. We've spoken relation to the amount that the Planfields get. And it's years and ages ago, years ago, five before Covid. And now it's only just come about now. I just can't get my head up why. Why? So if, if we, if we double down to, why wasn't it picked up before? Is it old council? Did we fail?
Yes, basically, previous councils have failed.
So we will fail at the last council, maybe? Quite a select few. Because I'm still under weather. Right? The council, this council sat, Brian and yourself sat there, had this allegation of what's going forward. And I sat there, two council meetings, under weather, which is all recording. And it's stated there, I can't discuss them at all. So it seems like things are happening behind those doors and not just one entity.
What has come to light, if you spare my attention, is the two thousand amendment to the governing document for that council. Because it changes, changed in 2000, not recently, but unrecognized by that. Every member of the management committee is a trustee. And you're a trustee, you then have a fair interest. But, I mean, they made a verbal undertaking that they would recognize that all the management committee were trustees, not just the four nominated ones, but the only people there, and those who had, you put the skin in the game, all the management committee are trustees. Whether they accept it, they recognize it or not, it is a legal fact because that's what they're governing, governing to say. And that's a very come to light in the last meeting.
Thank you, Chair. And also to watch you, I'll keep going back to long before, I think it was during Penny's or even before the chairmanship of the council, before you even joined, there were disquiet about the Planfield and the way it was run. I can recall Victor being shot down in flames because he said to this, the Planfield should come up around the town council control because of the Planfield committee being incompetent. And I certainly had, and Graham's queries over the amount that they would get in and what they were doing with it way back then. So it's not a new thing, not a new thing. It's been in Republican aid for a long time. So prior to your thing. But it's, well, because all sorts of reasons, business, and as Penny says, and Bob says, and, and Councillor Baker said, a lot more has come to light very recently in the last year. And now it's the time to address it. So I think it has been to the large degree.
Nice done, councillor Palmer. How long's your life been?
About three years.
Three years? And yourself being a committee member?
Seven years.
Wow. We've, we can't. Or is there another agenda, a larger?
No.
Seven years, three years? Wow. And as I, like councillor Witten said, it's been brought to public attention. So either we, as councillor, aren't doing our job properly, or someone here has got something else to hide.
Can I say, I think the council have not done their job. I no certainly do not vote for not giving and supporting the remembrance fields. That's something I made perfectly clear at the last meeting. I might have voted against paying on that initial until things were sorted out. But I firmly support Brampton Town Council supporting the remembrance Planfield. You would remember, the remembrance Planfields were given entirely to the use and benefit of the people of Brampton.
I remember Gary Groffler, who had written up a lot when he was councillor, in relation to this, and it fell on their fumes. I remember other councillors writing up stuff. And I hope they're watching and I hope they come out and all work and then we believe. Because it's something that's no right. That's all I can say on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Penny, for supporting the Brampton Members' Planfield. I'm very glad to hear that. I doubt, I doubt whether you weren't born to anyway, because I always thought you was behind it. Okay, well, I'm not going to be absolutely led by mind of my side. I'll sign on these things tomorrow or the next day. But I'll give, I'll give the, I'll give the part a month or so to get new people to do this stuff or sign for them. So we can't, we can't leave you in the lurch or anybody else or any bills or wages not paid. I'll, I'll carry on and do that as per normal until somebody else is paying. I hope you're happy with that.
I have no problem with you being somebody to authorize, because on this occasion, I think you're unwise.
Right, there's been a lot to chat. Are we going to pay this half payment? I'm sitting, something to sign or change.
This is one we are through with the last meeting and it's been paid.
I'll move on. Number six. Energy business. Who was that first name?
Um, no, not just yet, no, not just, not yet, no.
A bit of energy business from me, councillor Chair, sorry. The road, very road. Mentioned it before. I said before something, if it hurt, kid did. Cars still parking on that pavement. We've got to do that. It's a bit third of the county council. Help, there's going to be another bad accident on that road there. I know there's probably multiple places in Brampton.
I had mentioned that highways were meant to make a case for footfalls. It's too late to miss the jobs. I had to do a line, there's, there's no lines up at the, similar. Put that in there ago and it's going to be in the way. So I present it, but don't expect things to move quickly at highways. I think it's common knowledge that they're...
Would it not help if councillors reported it online as well to support? Because I, I know what you're saying. It is very difficult, if you, um, the more people that report things online. We've all got to do something. We've all got to help.
I'd love something to sign in the public board.
Sorry. Can I just ask if you've mentioned before, and it's been brought up, say you've mentioned this or you have reported this, as it's actually been brought up, it's something that needs to be done, or you've just mentioned it. So we've discussed it on the place for that highway. So nothing is in progress yet, but just mentioned.
There's a contribution from the council, we've talked about it before, sometimes we can see where they ask for financial, some sort of contribution. So I might put on the agenda for September, see what the council reacts to. If anything, something could come from that county project. That could come from local budget, that could come from, is that a question? That could come from any highways, expenses. I think some idea, I think I've got that feeling before this meeting, the program. And I'm hoping to be able to then control. I'm hoping by that, by every parish council, they can...
This is a natural road safety.
Yeah.
So if this is natural road safety, then it's sort of, I can't say.
Well, I'm not saying I'm a councillor. I'll tell people what a councillor, what is actually. I can, I can, see if there's anything to turn the house, so we can, I'm saying make a case for government, then you know.
Yeah, what I might suggest, what I mean is, is when you come across something like this, you email all of the councillors and get them on board, explaining what the situation is. Then they're aware and we can make a case together. And I'm going to answer it at the time. But this is the first I've heard of it.
My good friend, yeah, I myself, put a complaint, old clerk, did I did on our ground? Yes, I called you a notifier and then spoke with Chair yourself and said, what's happened now? There's an accident took place. It is parked, it's right near, that's going down there, a horse stall, mole race. Kids are going to get hit the other day, there's car parked in the bend. I was hoping it was coming on the very road, straight from northern, straight way down. Come in, you've got the bend that goes around, square bit, cuts the grass, the ground and a little bit. It's car parked here, road bends around. You cannot see all the traffic. Mole race.
I mean, just before crossing opposite doctor's and dentist's.
So what happens is they're right prior to full flat, so coming up the street, got the road bends around, then where the bend is, it's where I let the people. Car went to, the other pass well deep, they went straight. Down there. If they have speed, I've got to pull down that road. It's gone, they passed that. And now you've got that bend and your kids, you've got to mow it over, why not? Come on Brampton, why don't you kids?
If councillors report to the right council as a first place, it's a penalty. It's never, it's never the part into the car.
I, I, I reported clerk, I reported to West Suffolk as well.
It's not Brampton Town Council, you need to go to Suffolk.
But it is.
Yes, but we have no, I thought, do you realise what authority as a town house?
Yeah, very not. But still, we sit here and discuss other things that aren't really that serious, when in fact this is, and we should all be getting involved in.
Yes, but it's no good getting behind it and passing it back to the car. We need to help town or, or the county or the district councillors by the working direct county and district.
But what I'm saying is, I've told you, it's a serious matter, but it does, no one's got all of it. What, what can I do? I can do this, can do this, can do that. Yeah, we'd rather sit here and hang one of our rags when I retire my marriage bill instead of children getting killed.
Because I know on occasions in the past, with things, and I've spoken to you for a bunch of, that's, that's ten minutes, but actually, we need to be here. And then...
Which I believe Brampton did, and I did. But what I'm saying is, as a councillor, can we not do more? That's all I'm saying. There you go, you shut up.
There's financial restrictions. And I do sympathize, not very often with councillors, but I do sympathize that, you know, it's like, has it left out of the stone?
Yeah, I, I feel that, I hear that. But I'm saying, it is something serious. And I said, it's going to, and then more's going to happen. The child's already been hit and another one will happen. It's just something serious.
Can I just say something? You know, I've nearly had two accidents in that area in the last week. Came rounds from Score Street, probably ten mile an hour creeping along. Cyclists came straight off of a knotty hill, straight in front of them. Luckily I wasn't going at any speed, so I managed to stop. And the second occasion was at the junction that you've been talking about, again, cyclists going right across the front of all the traffic, didn't look, just hoped to pray that we're going to get across there. Now, from what I understand, the child that did get knocked out wasn't at the cross. Now, the crossing is being changed this week for new, uh, new equipment because it is out to date. And that's the reason why it keeps breaking down. I've been on that, I don't know, hang on, last six, eight months about that. Every time I get a report in from a member of the public, they won't go to the, to the right people. I have spent time filling in the report form and I've sent it off to Suffolk. Because, no, it's not their, anybody else's job to fill in the report form. Oh, it's yours because I've told you it's about it. Uh, oh, it's yours because I've told you it's, uh, about it, get on with it. It isn't my job, I'm supposed to be doing other things, but I can't get on with them because, you know, for instance, I had someone coming the other day, trip hazard on, uh, on Market Hill. There we are, I'm out there taking photographs of it because they apparently had no internet access, they didn't have a smartphone. But strangely enough, they did have a smartphone in their hand. So I had to take the report, send it off.
So please report that seven times.
Which one?
Trip hazard.
But to us.
It's only if you say, please tell me, my please like to you.
That's a lot, I never want to be a police officer. Well, I mean, it is all, when it comes, I mean, going back over the years when I used to attend, if I'm looking at you a long time, we used to have a representative from the police. You know, however we understand it is that they not pay the government because of the public and the abuse and everything else. Well, surely, I mean, could this not be put back? And to the least, to perhaps a ten once a month, as we do. No, I mean, council working for a, a really good position here. This is also happening on effective work. And we have, we have a zebra crossing up there against a, as their purpose would screw things. Uh, tonight, as on the course of moving the traffic roads here, there's still a big, big, uh, well, he went up there loads. Look, there was no tomorrow, now somebody come out from that very road, gone the road against, uh, into the nearest, he was through. There's no way he can stop. I mean, the wind squinched and he was gone. And you can see, he sat back in his seat for a while. Now, that happens where you are, every day, every night. That road, that's after the road, I have a research before, you know, I answered, uh, about, uh, four months ago, we had a speed trap down London Road. London Road is not the only problem. Very Road is a problem, you never get a speed trap up there. You know, I mean, it, surely we could, or can we not put something into the police on the radio basis to try and wake somebody up? Well, thank you, Chair. Um, at the start of my chairmanship, I was approached by the police inspector in charge of this area, wishing to attend council meeting. I passed this on to the town graph and I passed it on to him several times through and my chairmanship, that he should be invited and it has never happened. In the end, I came up, he did actually attend the opening of the, um, friendship bench. And I mentioned it again then. But it has consistently been formed on deaf ears, all he needs is a remote invitation. Surely we can do it. Although, it's not a week, it's a town shot.
The, the police inspector.
And the information's been out there for more than, well, for kind of three years almost.
I mean, whether he's interested or whether he's not, if he's booked in at the council, he can't, he's not, something wrong with him.
Well, no, but the other point is, is as a member of the public, not as a councillor, and a council councillor, right? If you see somebody behaving in that way, take their number, take their registration, take it. If you can, get pictures of them on a smartphone doing it and report it to the police. But nine times out of ten, what happens is when this happens, people put it on Facebook and then the police have no jurisdiction whatsoever to prosecute. Or even investigate, when it goes on Facebook, when the reports are.
Just like this, you have to manage.
Um, I was just going to say, I don't expect that, um, somebody, um, pointed out, there is however thirty signs other than the ones when you come in and the one that flushes. There isn't any, all well.
The lampposts are, um, um, set distance. If, uh, if you're in an area where the lampposts are set distance, I think it's a hundred meters, uh, that's, you know, thirty mile an hour, uh.
That I know, but other people, and there isn't anything.
It's in the highway, it's not.
Yeah, I'll just, you asked me to bring it out, so I was like.
Here we are, number seven, Steve Ritter reports in the town, I'm sure you'll have that. Um, I'm number eight, topic four, so I'll propose that you suspend standing orders coming for that, I have a connection in a second. Open that, please, in favour of suspended standing orders? Yeah, yeah.
All right.
In favour of suspended standing orders to cover for us? Yeah. Okay. So, um, remember the topic, anyone who'd like to school? Okay.
Just a brief comment on what you've just been discussing, and not necessarily any extending. The penalty crossing, the zebra crossing, that the younger children coming straight from school cross at that point and it's on the bend and traffic's coming around too quickly, is that the whole point?
Yes.
So if you were given the token for, if you were highways and asked to do something about it, what would you do? Do you need to move, are you asking to move the zebra crossing one way or the other or do you agree with your own? What's the best to give the children safe?
Well, in relation to Berry Road, all it is, is quite a simple picture, it's to stop the individuals parking on that bend that create the cars overtaking and going stupid, I mean, people will do it fast. But two options there, put another camera or some sort of enforcement and stop parking on the bend. In relation to better road, I actually am.
Certainly causes accidents. If there's a traffic eye on Berry Road, and if you thought, you wouldn't have that problem. Now, when I put the double yellow lines on the Crown Street, that was a priority because the children, because the children everywhere in the way there. And I prioritised that, I had to wait three years to get these double yellow lines in, that was an enormous cost. Um, I had to make the case for it, the school had to make the case for it, they eventually put them in, it took me three years, but Phil Bishop tried eighteen years to put them in. At the same time, I attempted to put twenty mile an hour limit. And the county said to me, you don't bother because the police won't enforce it. I, I, I rest my case as it is.
You go to most towns in America, the speed limit within the town of Greece is twenty miles an hour for the best. And if you exceed it, you will get caught. There's no two ways about it, and this is the problem in this country, that people do it and get away with it. And the likelihood of being caught is minimal.
There's, I forget where Quark is, heading towards Newmarket, there's a school, um, I want to say it's, why was I forgetting, we've got, uh, Ben Burge's on the line. Excellent. They're not, you've got Ben Burge, they're in Furlough Road or something, Furlough Road, you've got the pub on the corner, they're over there. Careful, that's it. They've got, they've got a lot of Quark, that's twenty miles an hour. And they've got the, uh, the road rail, I don't know where they come out, you know, you have to wait and then they're back. I don't want them to get in trouble, everyone does come in, they've got to come on. Not false, there's no double yellers.
Yeah, they don't stop over. But if trucks can go around, you should go.
Looking for a punch on there.
I just want, um, very often more councillors to speak on the fact that it's not, it's humans and judgment respect. Because you can, whether you are going twenty miles an hour, you can. If you try to buy a judge from the new pound store, cause accidents. You yourself take this, when you're trying with your bike, occupying, being sponsored by this car, as you said, you're doing. So.
It's human error, I expect you will notice, it's human error.
No, um, so that answered your question, Mr.
Not really, but what the highways actually, there's that, there's a problem. Are there any foot highways in the very distance?
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. But that's just one spot in Brandon. Anyway, how many spots, very many spots get flagged up to the iron nation basis, opposite the cinema, Church Road, Manor Road, Bedford Road, it's just countless, I mean, the highways are shit, they're outside of town. You're not going to show them.
Big though, come on, you can take the metres, road, Berry Road, there are two main roads in and out of Brandon, Longwood Road, is that correct? Don't need to start, like, start being worked away, don't need to worry about all the other districts and stuff, right? West Side can force parking through the high street, they can down there, put a double yellers on the bend and force that, it's just stuck roads and where the car parks.
Been waiting plenty, I've seen the yellow lines, um, so if you were something before now, maybe nothing ahead of you in two years. I've done a couple of schemes, a couple of schemes for a board jerk or something like that. You have to make a case for it, you have to put the money up front to make a case for it, which can be up to, it can be up to two thousand pounds to make the case for double yellow lines. The double yellow lines, three or four metres of double yellow lines, cost you over a thousand pounds. My question, that whole is per annum, is six hours and six hundred pounds per annum. That's a penny for three or four metres of yellow lines.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, okay. How's the power, you put it back on that question?
No, I'm new question, so. When you're, when you're ready.
Yeah, yeah, good, yeah.
Okay, um, this last couple of weeks, I've had people ask me, uh, about, um, getting blood tests in Brandon. And they tell me they can get them in the High Street circuit, they can't get them across to the circuit. That's all the core circuit, Swan circuit. Okay, so I've been on to the boss of this Swan group, uh, very recently. And he says they can't provide the service because it's not in their contract. Otherwise, why do the very, very ill people just aid people? Uh, because they haven't got the rule in there. So I progressed it through the National Health Service this afternoon. And we're going to try and get it at the Health and Measure Centre, uh, near England Men's Park there. So I should be pursuing that now because lots and lots of people want blood tests, you know, they'd like to get to Milton Hall, Newmarket or Berry. And, uh, sometimes it's easy to do that, but a lot of people haven't got the transport or the time to do that. So that's one thing I'm professional at, so it's one of my important. Okay, I've got a second one, I've got time to do that. Okay, um, this last Saturday, West Side Council held a well advertised local panel show on Marketplace. Um, uh, this was to give people in Brandon full up to date, uh, information about hosing, hosing across, tricking, hosing across, tricking in Brandon. Um, the roads, this road show consists of two West Side Council officers. And David Roach, who's the cabinet member for Pound, the Southside Council. So anybody that come along could ask questions to the people who've been leading that team for the last nine months. Um, we did get thirty five people there. Um, uh, I'm disappointed with the coun, what a councillor's going to turn that. Uh, councillor, uh, mechanic turned up. In fact, he took, uh, uh, councillor Roach round Brandon to show him different areas of rubber station, other places in Brandon. And councillor, councillor Ripley came up to help to put the, the equipment up and running and other. Uh, you yourself sent apologies to the ten, but no other councillor attended, which I was rather disapproving in. I know Penny Everton held a very worthwhile one on British Stirk for the Thursday before that, one two people went to. But this was a more up to date one, so I was disappointed, disappointed to save the list. Um, one other thing, um, we also, on twenty ninth of June, we had a walk around on Brandon Men's Park building, all council members were involved. Yourself come, councillor Everton came, councillor, uh, mechanic came and I came. And then we went round, we went round to look at the new changing facilities for the football club. And Al, Al, Adam Talbot came round and showed everybody round. Uh, we went to the council building to show them. We went to the skirt, where Br, skirt, where Brendan Johnson came and showed us all round there. And went down to the allotments, we penned it all the way down to the bottom of the allotment, showing what's going allotment. And we went down to Fisher Lakes, right, and then the party ended up at the British League. But I was disappointed that only four councillors attended that when everybody was invited. Because there's been a lot of criticism from the Men's Park, this is for the first hand experience, to see what goes on down there, where I can ask questions. Okay, uh, you yourself attended the last Men's Park meeting and I believe you're going to give a report.
I am.
On your finding of a failure. That's me finish for the last.
Just to answer you, there you go. I'd have loved to have come, but nobody else there would have liked me to come because there was still testing.
It was just, what are you doing?
I did ask for my apologies to be delivered for that. Walkabout's not on my agenda at the moment, but, uh, I hope there is a delivery.
Okay, well, well, go, accept them.
Well, Graham, I did ask you to give my apologies.
I did say that, you, you were.
I don't forgot the message, but anyway, okay, accepted.
A flip mark, please. I didn't give any apologies, David, but I am now, I do follow those.
I just wanted to say, it was a very enjoyable talk, because I hadn't been down to Fisher Lake, which is quite nasty. It was very interesting and I thought the groups are doing individually, they're doing a good job, a very good job. And I was very impressed with the allotments.
Please to hear. And Simon, did you go round all of my men's, all these seats? I was, I was over. I don't know how many councillors know this, I only discovered it myself, they're trying to phone the leisure centre a month ago. They don't accept telephone calls anymore, nobody even can phone the leisure centre. Books can't do anything. Hot out of Jersey Coast, through to Central, um, telephone person, you're lacking, you get an answer. Who is covering all the leisure centres in West Side. Now, Langfields are unable to bring any pressure to ground this, but maybe the town council could pressurise West Side into changing the system. They've got, they've got some of them, you do the leisure centre, they've got a telephone number. Why not tell people, some of the public who want to use the leisure centre, be enough to try and help them book it?
Ask a question. No, we can ask a question, you're up. Maybe you'll get my response, I like that.
Do you want me to close that one up? If you can manage your rabbit talk. I'll, I'll do that, I'll be there in a second.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah, I'm happy to be with you. I should give you an update on the, on the sponsorship scheme that you're trying to found it. Um, we set up this, something similar to our families who welcome Ukraine, Ukraine into their homes. First of all, doing children. And there's a hundred ninety one in the West Southern area who own their homes, which I think is tremendous and out of the community. Hundred ninety one families who live, who are compared with English, uh, people in the West Southern region. Um, a district government minister, Chair, I'm sure many of us have seen that all the grass has been covered all the woods, west, central and east. And, uh, I did, uh, I quickly made a part of a general reminder and I finally confirmed that because I can't begin in. They've done some quite considerable work, uh. The thing is, the problem is every year we have this battle with the women, the female, to get office available. It's working all right, um, I think it's, it's reasonable. Um, I'm finishing up by just tagging on to the comments about the guided tour we had, I enjoyed it. Where else can you go and see all those facilities, all in one location and all run by, and all run by volunteers? And I think everything is firing on all cylinders down there, Commissioner.
You got the good. Okay, well, I forgive my little bit of problem, yes, I, I attended the last, um, I'll divide it onto the last.
Yes, I, I attended the last, um, I was invited along to the last, um, Land and Land's Park Hall meeting. And we had a chat with a few people beforehand, and then in the meeting, I sat there and I can, thought there are a few things that were mentioned in our, sort of, we've got a meeting with them, we've got our procedure. What, what, what was, what I witnessed had changed. So, it, for me, it was a positive. Um, and I think they're going to write to us and, um, we're writing that's what was said in the meeting, I remember writing, so I don't know if you've received anything yet, but I know it's basically, I just sent us an email, um, and the council page it. Yeah? Yeah?
Just one other question. Uh, yeah, basically, you had a word with our treasurer, Gordon Johnson.
Yeah.
Um, by the way, who used to teach I E B, uh, accounts and other, 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 other subjects? And then Mark, I E B, so she actually well qualified to be a county. So, any questions you've asked, we'll get the right answer.
Yeah, I'll, I'll answer.
You had a long talk to her anyway. And you were quite happy, you were quite happy with that, hoping as we've gone.
What we've talked about, I was happy with what I think. Yeah?
As we're spinning buckle. This is Victor. In your previous statement, you're saying about that Norfolk council are giving subsidies to the bus service in Suffolk, isn't it? Will it affect Brandon's bus services? Do you know?
I'm not sure, obviously, the fair is a good question and not a good one for the bus service in Suffolk. And if they come through from Norfolk, Brandon may affect it. Because there will be, there will be, they come under the subsidy, the grant. Like, well, I've been told in Suffolk that the grant that's given in Norfolk, this people in Suffolk, then, if the county council gets a grant, then, as they act the bus company. There's no grant for Suffolk, and I don't know any more than that.
Yeah, because we're on the borders, so, you know, that bus is still in Norfolk, and, so we might still get subsidy in some way.
Well, you, you're probably got the very best bus. If you're Suffolk, if you're in Suffolk, well, you know, just because you're on the Golden Island side, of course, you got it. We, 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 we passed Suffolk there, and if they get it, and we don't get it, nothing you can do about it. I was the problem, I don't know, it's just, you just couldn't. You're either, you're either Suffolk or Norfolk.
Just answer the question, I couldn't.
I did quite understand it.
Well, basically, if you, if you, if you're the coach operator in Norfolk and you get subsidy at Norfolk County Council, they can't. Just, just because you're a coach operator in Suffolk, and Suffolk has got no way of giving you this, um, these bits and pieces, you won't get it.
Well, coach services is Norfolk.
Sorry?
Coach services is Suffolk.
Yeah, but just because they're in Norfolk, just because they're in Norfolk, they still run, every, everybody runs across borders. Nothing you can do about it.
Then the other one, um, you was a bit quicker than matters arise. You got in there about sponsorship for the, um, brand, you know, the partners in the high street. Have you had any luck with any sponsors?
We're, we're in the process of, there hasn't come to me, we'll come back to the council and get that. Yeah, which is going up, how we can prevent it. The process of being in that environment.
And then one other thing, at the very right though, several years ago, a child was killed there. Did you know that in Elizabeth, now, Elizabeth Road, Cambridge, the very right. And when I pointed this out, the, the place, the place are quite happy for the cars to be parked where they are. They say it keeps the speed there. But it also gives a lot of blind spots, like having this child parked there, et cetera, et cetera. This is why they put that pedestrian crossing in that, uh, Elizabeth, going to Warwick, that's there. But the only other solution is double yellow lines on that, um, fence. I mean, they could talk parking Warwick, for those people. And if they have to park on that area, well, why can't we give them a permit to park in, um, very right? You know, where they can only park for three hours, we could give them a permit to stay there and park them on that fence. Because then they've only got a few yards to walk.
Sounds to me, so people to that, to give the considerations. And people, people want cars. Children need to be taught road manners, and drivers need to be taught some manners as well.
Yes, yes, I was just going to say that, um, Graham has an email from a Brandon employee to say that their judgment day is on the eighteenth of July. And it was to promote the Anglian European competition.
Okay, is everybody done, and can we go back to the meeting? Yeah? Okay, item number nine, correspondence. And I think Graham's had a couple of additions since the end of one.
Yeah, it's just from a gentleman that lives in Popwell, uh, who states that, I'm resident of Popwell, uh, been since my RF discharge in nineteen fifty three. While stationed at RF Felt, I've been through Brandon several times through. Since Marianna Melotol, uh, he, he gives me great pleasure to tell you that I've never seen a town looking so good and in such splendid condition.
Oh.
Well done.
I shall pass that one to, um, to the, to the, to the.
Okay, item number ten, cameras. Um, Paul Goffin, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Question, please. Your comment.
Call them up, we'll all enjoy it, yeah, we'll have a program. Okay, and, how's magic? She won't pick the pen, just, uh, I'm still waiting to see what she wants to do. Several things.
This was the, um, weekend.
Jubilee.
Jubilee, everybody, yeah, Jubilee. What's this one last, uh, happened there?
He was punching, punching Jude. He was getting a bit of a, you know, a bit of a prickling, wasn't he?
Yeah.
He was very, he was, he was there when he was there.
Yeah. That was a gentleman, he's, he's calling, he's one, two, three, that was.
He, he was on the, on the Saturday, on the, uh, uh, uh.
Everybody else, thank you, last, so now they're going. This is, uh, really, really, really good. Yeah, that was, um, Queen's Jubilee, again, um, little flyer that went out to everybody. One other thing, yeah. She described everything, um, we, we actually did, it was a pretty big house. So, effectively, we got to, come in, come in the house, I don't know, without, yeah, and, uh, uh.
Five thousand.
About five thousand, about five thousand people it went out to, or households it went out to. So, the cost of probably about eighty quid worth of paper, uh, and that. So, for two hundred quid, we got to everybody, we've got it printed, folded, delivered to everybody in Brandon. So, it was a bit exciting.
A lot of words, I had a lot picked up, another favorite, how, how, how it was. But maybe not tonight.
Yeah, I ordered it up.
Okay, any other comments? For me to work.
This is, this is a paper, isn't it?
Yeah, this is, this is a paper, so.
Right, page two, twenty fifth of June. Insurance resales increase. Tell me what's that mean? It is definitely insurance, um, and that for the salaries. It's the increase, because the salaries were increased, I had to notify the insurance company, as it was based on previous feedbacks we've given them. Because the increases that we've put through, um, that increased our premium.
Right, okay, that's fine.
All right, okay, that's fine, you know, so what I was saying, there's why, this is very, it's, it's hard.
We're desperate.
Somebody's going to steal, steal the same, because it's, we were applying for more.
That's what's been done previously, so all I'm doing is following what's done previously. Um, it's part of our overall policy. Um, and because, you know, with the question about how much, you know, we have to give them, um, salary figure for the year. Um, I've done that, and they've come back and said, you know, keep listening, please, it's had to go up.
Hmm, has it got to be for that person, or three?
Yeah.
Are we going to as well, man, for one year?
Yeah, just a couple. On page two, about our, what element the lift.
Yeah.
You've got here on the seventeenth, you've got standard lift, the quarterly lift service. Do we actually have another quarterly lift service when the light tattle lift people do their six-month inspection? So here we have a firm that does quarter, 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 and then this other firm does a six-month, and there's another six-month.
Yeah, yes.
So we have two firms doing the inspection of the lift.
No, it's not.
Two lots, it's thirty-six months.
No, no, it's, they come in, every one, staffers come in every, uh, every other month.
Well, it says here, quarter.
Yeah, that's, yeah, sorry, perhaps that's wrong. Right. They come in about every, I think it's about every other month they come in to do a service on the lift.
Yeah.
Right? Tattles come in to do the inspection. Two different things.
Yeah, I can see that's two, two different, that's why I'm asking. Because it's, because I've got two firms doing the same thing, on the same thing.
One's, one's a service and one's an inspection.
One's an inspection. One's an item, what's?
One's a service and one's an inspection. If you take your car from garage and ask them to do an inspection, they will do an inspection, they won't, they won't change the oil.
Okay.
Yeah, we legally advise, so that, if that inspection is not done, then that lift can't be used.
Well, to my mind, the standard people to pick up things like that, but anyway, they're more.
They do advise, but they're not, they're not, because it's their, because it's their equipment, they can't inspect their own equipment.
All right, okay. All right, and then the other one, right, compared to the churchyard path, okay?
Yeah.
Seven, seven thousand pounds, we get the AT, et cetera. Uh, now, shouldn't, I know when we had this cemetery inspection last year, we were saying about the path, et cetera, et cetera. Now, shouldn't Suffolk County Council, some organisation contribute towards this churchyard path? When, when there isn't a path around that bend? And all the people, because there's no path around that terrible bend where they've just built two new properties. People have to use the churchyard path for safety to go from Manor Row to the town centre. So shouldn't an organisation be helping us financially with that path because there's no path on that?
In nineteen oh eight, Brandon Town Council took on the responsibility for the cursed churchyard. That might still question it. It wasn't, it wasn't for his safety, it was Suffolk County Council, Brandon Town Council, it took the responsibility of churchyard. Unfortunately, you know, you know, we, we, we had to do it. I mean, it's a bit like cutting the grass down there. I mean, you know, don't, you're going to do that path, actually, you're not going to cut the grass.
But what is in there of harm, like, on the other side?
Just tell me, tell me, I don't have idea why.
Give us something that the council got into that we cannot be out of, and that is it. We are responsible for the cursed churchyard, the grass and the path.
Peter, there isn't a path on that back porch, because there aren't one there. But if you want one there, bring Suffolk High one and go through it and engage everybody around the town hall. Don't you say it slowly about what you know.
We should be getting help, that, that, they're, they're.
What's there's no path to the churchyard? Is that what you're thinking?
I suggest council control, it's not a thing.
Yeah.
My car's, I'm going to get it in another. Hey, Jack, I was just wondering, so the council took on, when can I get away, you're saying? Wonder if there's, if you're any interest then, or council members?
You don't ask me.
Why not? Why not? And you're saying, you just said, you just said we can't change it, they made it, we can change it. We can't change it. You said we can't, why not?
You've got a di, diagnostic council, but it is actually written down to be in law, we've got the irresponsible.
You've spoken that, I mean, I can put you in touch with a lot of things, you know, you're saying, I grew that, it's, it's, it's. He will reach you, uh, by act, while you, while we are responsible for that.
It's a key, you know, like, why?
It was still open there.
Right?
Yeah.
What that means is you can't, um, it's not operations, it's not used.
When it was open, people still get buried there.
No, they can't.
Now, it's closed because it's full, so that's when, you know, they moved across the wall to the new cemetery.
So we're, 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 yes.
Yes, and one's up because it's a point of law, we do.
And then one's law.
Yes, yeah.
It is, it is, it is.
It's what I've made my hand up to say for the last five minutes, it's not optional, it was a point of law.
So I just now as council, I've tried myself with someone that's more educated, uh, just bringing that point of law side to set. I'm trying to have a point.
I'm laughing about something that happens over.
I'm just curious, that's what I'm like, I'm, if you can place it. Can you, can you, just go, just, just try and have a better analysis, you know, then ask them a question. Anyway, you were finding, no, thank you. So?
We're going up a plane, and I didn't like to interrupt.
Fine, the big is not.
That's a nice idea, uh, if the Suffolk County Council would drop that path over to the centre. That's probably a million, ten million one chance, um, to be, but I take it from my board eye, maybe it's better to pass.
Okay, you have to move to the right now, sorry, right? Okay. Places in fine, maybe, yes. Oh, wait, 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 wait. You're backing it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, those are fine, maybe, yes. Okay. Next, send. Okay, item number eleven, two incoming expenses stated against the budget for, um, in the past. Um, item number twelve, no commitments from the events committee. Item number thirteen, the knowledge star tour, take place on the 14th of August twenty twenty-two, council commitment required, this is it. It's nice to see who'd like to come along, you know? Phil, I think that's a good job last year.
She's, she's, yeah, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, that's what we said, yeah, yeah, yeah. Any other councillors who want to come along?
Um, I'd ask you to keep, right down my apologies, but water, I'm not on my agenda at the moment.
Might as well, I believe. Yeah? I should leave that, so. That's the thing, you're, you're.
Absolutely, and then stay to the bridge.
Well, I'm also.
Have we moved the ring down now?
I've, I've, I've just got, so you've got.
If you would, Victor's, I would, I would, I would, I would be there soon. It's a bad one. Okay. So, the happy, the bad. No, I think you'd be about right. Two or four, can we have a pass?
Anyone that wants to donate cakes who can't make it, you can.
Okay. All right, item number four, fourteen, to note the minutes of the new cemetery working party. All right, number fifteen, to note the minutes of the planning committee. Okay. Thank you. Okay, item number sixteen, to resolve to exclude the public impress to, to the Public Colleagues, Misses Peet Act, number nineteen. Again, thank you for that, yeah. Okay, will I have a vote, then? Those in favor?
Are you?
No. A good point. I've scored a lot. Any questions, uh, uh? Chair?